Like you put it in the cart?
No, I can put it in the cart, get to check out, ship, you know, check all your shipping options and everything else, and then you place my order and it says, "I'm sorry, we can't ship that to your address."
Would you go town halls for all your?
It doesn't matter, I have it set up in a couple of different ways. And it doesn't.
Is it because it's the town hall?
I don't know, because whether you do the P O box or the street address, it just says, "No, we can't ship that to that address." It like, we can't ship that to the address, like, you know, we'll ship you other things, but not that.
That's weird.
I don't know, so. That's all old stuff.
This is all our stuff?
Yeah, I just wanna know that you were like done with it, so it's just those two.
I need to explain. I'll call the meeting to order. Approval of the minutes of April 15. Did you get to read it?
Yep.
I did too.
Oh, good.
If I consensus, we'll pass the minutes. Community input? No? Okay. Please?
This is all the ready.
Yes.
Okay, last week, I had to call Townsend Energy in. As summer's worth, the. We developed a leak downstairs, one of the pressure relief valves let go. Fortunately caught it there fairly soon after it happened, so just to let you know, we should be getting a bill sometime soon from them for that repair.
Now, I talked to Bob, and so I had already known about that, so did we defer the new purchase of the fans?
No, we haven't talked about it.
We haven't talked about it, I know it, we're told that it could be up to a couple of years still have life.
It was approved by the vote, so it's up to the board whether or not, or when you wanna do it.
We haven't discussed it, so, okay, alright.
Okay, two purchase orders, the first number 1595, made out to Police One Academy. It's our yearly training subscription for $1,056, and that will come out of pro-development. It is an anticipated expense, it's actually not due till, I think it's like July 1st or something like that, but so we won't actually submit, I won't send it to Caroline until June.
Okay, I'll move purchase order 1595 to Police One Academy for $1,056 for annual training subscription.
I'll second it, any discussion?
What does that include, what is it?
It's a subscription for everyone, for everyone in the department to go to the Police One Academy, and we have their required monthly training, sometimes an hour class, sometimes a three-hour class, and it's on all aspects of law enforcement, ethics, harassment, active shooter, motor vehicle stops, and whatnot.
Is this all online?
It's all online.
Oh, okay, and then they get certified, they get.
They get certified, they get credit for taking the course.
Any other questions?
No.
Wanna make a vote?
I already moved it.
Yeah, you're ready to vote?
Yes.
Okay, all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
All those opposed, okay. Do you want to put the date?
Yeah.
Please do, yes.
Twenty seconds.
Twenty seconds.
And purchase order number 1596, made out to the city of Dover. Repairs to Cruiser 73, last week, some of the LED lights started to go out, and they had to replace a seatbelt mechanism, a sway bar, that's probably $400, and we had to put brakes on the Cruiser number 71, so I estimate that about $500 per grand to $900 to come out of the vehicle maintenance account.
Okay, I'll move purchase order 1596 to the city of Dover for $900, must say up to $900?
Cause one thing hasn't been done yet, right?
So they've both been done.
Oh, okay.
They've both been done, yes.
Oh, you just don't have those?
They had to get them, we don't get the invoice from city of Dover until two or three months after the service has been done.
Okay.
So for repairs to Cruiser 71 and Cruiser 73.
Alright, I'll second it, any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
All those opposed?
This Saturday is the DEA drunk take-back day from 10 to 2, so if you have unwanted medications and prescription medicines and over-the-counter stuff that you wanna get rid of, just let us know, drop it on the PD. We should have a blurb on our Facebook page tomorrow, and I've asked Tia to send out a blurb through the email system, so.
You usually get a decent amount?
We do, yes, we do, yeah.
How often is that done?
Sometimes three times a year.
Okay.
This is the first of 2018, this one.
2019?
Yes, 2019. I've been out listening to area people for last hour drunk in traffic, so.
Okay, area?
So the fire was.
But I can't, I can't get there, for me, they say, "There you go."
There was a fire on Gulf Road?
Yeah, somewhere in Dover on the Gulf Road.
Okay.
So they were shifting everything up the Bear Road, I was shifting everything up the Bear Road, and then there were several times, several points where the traffic actually get backed up past your house, past Sligo Road.
Wow.
And down the hill a little way, so I called one of my officers a little bit early, I said, "You need to pull it out on Bear Road, and let's start getting some of the traffic off Bear Road," so.
Yeah.
That's all that I have for you tonight, anything for me?
Anything for you?
No.
Yeah, great, thanks, bye, have a good night. No one from fire highway?
Good evening.
Oh wait, my watch was, huh, do I need him?
No, no.
No?
No, no. It's just a flashlight.
Yeah, okay.
I have the Pike contracts for the road work. They are wanting to start within a couple of weeks, so we have to try to move this forward if we can, if that's what the plan is. One for each.
Oh, no, there's not one for each, there are two different ones, you have to add them together.
One for each project.
Oh, yeah, okay.
Yeah, I have it on my phone.
And this is what you had said it was last week, so.
You'll notice there's money for gravel there, but that's the gravel that we're buying through them to do the shoulder work, we're doing the work, not them. It's in that figure, that's all, so we had numbers. And that doesn't have to be purchased until after we get, you know, rid away, so when we get the project, we'll do it piecemeal.
Do you wanna say this?
I have it in here.
You don't, oh, okay, good, alright. So nothing's changed in what we discussed previously?
So, is this the whole contract? It seems a little brief. Is this just a?
Is it currently the contracts that were written up before, we're writing up right now?
Or?
Well, not exactly, but we have them in town. I modified them from what started as a Dover contract for Bear Road, and it's been through our legal, and it just continues to get modified for whatever the project is for the year.
So what it is, their labor must be included in their rate, their rates of, cause there's no labor on here, so it must be included in their.
That's the finish.
That's the finished price.
Yes, yeah.
So that includes, you know, gravel would be the only thing that doesn't include labor, because our staff is gonna do it, but everything else is an installed price.
Should we spell that out? Or no, gravel material only, or is that not?
Well, so, this is where I would suggest that if the board is willing to go along with the project at this cost, that that's something that's more specifically outlined in the contract, it's asphalt laid in place, which is to say installed. And it says that specifically in the contract, so that there's not any misunderstanding about that, though. I wouldn't be really concerned about Pike doing that, but it's more explicit.
Chris from Pike said that we could have, draw up our own contract, or that's what most towns use right there, so the choice is yours. And I can give, if you guys sign this off, Caroline wants to make either one of another version of it, we can have them sign off on that second version, but. The wording is not gonna, you know.
Okay, yeah, I'm good then.
They're willing to sign the other contract, so if you're happy to have the other contract in place, then you can sign this tonight, and at least let Pike know that you wanna move forward.
Right.
And George can schedule.
So we know the first spot.
And in the meantime, we can get this other contract revised and signed, and they're happy to do that, so that should be workable.
Okay.
Is that good with you?
Yeah.
Okay.
Call a motion to the place.
Are we gonna do a P O for this, or is it these enough?
That's enough.
Okay.
Because it's a contract.
Okay, alright.
So.
Do you want to add anything?
Yeah, I think I got 38750, but might as well just make sure.
If you would, you could reference the quote numbers.
Oh, okay.
If that's easier.
I just wanna make sure we have a total. 338, 250.
Okay. Don't trust them.
No, no.
That's correct according to what he put in his, that's what you get when you add those together.
Sorry, I was talking and doing that.
His 328?
338, 228.
338, yeah, okay.
Yeah. I don't see a quote number. Item numbers.
Yeah, I don't see a quote number either. Can we put a number when it's a bid number, can we put a number?
You can certainly put a number and reference it by the number that we installed there.
Yeah, and then.
Bid number one, 2019-1?
Sure.
Alright, so I move that we accept bid number 2019-1 from Pike Industries for $120,625.
I second that, and that's for the Heritage Drive section of it, yeah.
That's the Heritage Drive in Moses County.
Yeah, okay, any further discussion? All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion passes.
Alright, and then I will move grade number 2019-2 from Pike Industries for $217,625 for paving from Bear Road to Pinch Hill Road, for Sligo Road.
Okay, I'll second it, any discussion? None, all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
All those opposed? Okay, so are we gonna take a copy of these before he takes them?
I would like to, can you pick them up in the morning and I'll send them?
And do I, I have to sign it?
Please do.
He'll probably come here, he'll probably come here, he may wait till you have that second contract.
Okay, 120, 625.
I am the buyer?
Yes.
And then today's day, right?
Yes.
Okay, so who's getting the due?
I'm gonna take this, I'm gonna actually have to call you.
Okay.
That way they will, you can discuss that, and use it to pay anything, and.
Okay.
I plan on moving forward this week on some of the projects down, so we get ahead of the game. Like the cross culverts and stuff, we have to get in before they grind the road. So I got a P O here for culverts for $2,198, so that's for eight 15-inch culvert, by 15-inch by 20-foot sections, and for two 20-foot by 24-inch section, the culvert to replace downtown Sligo. Out of the culvert fund, I believe I'm gonna use.
Does it, well, does it say it on the P O? Can you put it on the left column?
I can do it.
Yeah, culvert fund.
Culvert fund.
Culvert fund, on the left where it says account number.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Okay, I'll move purchase order 1632 to Elimination Systems Inc. For $2,198.72 for culverts.
Second it? Any discussion?
So you'll pull out whatever culvert's in there?
We'll remove the metal culverts, we have some culverts that are actually protruding out of the top of the road now.
Okay.
We're gonna be dropping down a foot and a half below the grade, so the water, you know, eliminate cross and everything else.
Yep.
So we wanna replace all the cross culverts, because they're steel, and 10 to 1 by 10, we're gonna dig out, they're gonna be rotted, and these are gonna be all plastic, with the way everyone puts it today.
Okay.
They put plastic in?
Yep.
What does that, how does that hold up with freezing? It doesn't.
No different, it actually moves better than steel, and steel moves, it doesn't flex, plastic will flex with the ground.
Okay.
And the life expectancy on that's four or five times what regular culverts are, they don't break.
Wow.
The others wrought out, I mean, the metal culverts wrought out.
Yeah, okay.
Okay.
Any other questions?
Yeah.
All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
All those opposed?
I mean, you'll see, all the work they're doing now is plastic or PVC piping, and even the gas lines, they're plastic instead of metal. I'm gonna bring up about the truck, I don't know where we're gonna go with that.
Yeah, I saw something, I didn't think he got anything.
As long as I have to hear, just pass them this way, and I'll.
Okay.
I have, this is what makes sense, that's for the truck, based on the visual inspection, the truck is currently valued around $20,000 to $22,000. We put it in crane list for 22.5, and we received a full non-IU payment, you know, if we want to pay for it, we have a deposit on the truck. However, after we, Caroline and I spoke today, we noticed in the back of the book, it has to go out to bid. And if we go out to bid, you're not gonna get nowhere near that for the truck, that was a choice, you people are gonna have to pay.
Well, I don't, I think we can put it out to bid with a minimum bid, I don't think there's any rule against that.
Well, he can bid.
Yes, he can, but we, well, we put it for 22.5, and we have somebody that bought that, that wants that truck for 22.5.
I know, we just have to follow the rules.
He could lose that truck.
But I think we put it out to bid, all bids need to be in by Friday, and we take the highest one. Let this gentleman know, I assume this gentleman shouldn't make the assumption that we're sorry, cause we did things, and hopefully he doesn't pull his offer.
I don't think he, well, I mean, I have somebody else in mind for the truck too, I mean, but they know what the price was in the thing, so, you know.
Yeah, you kind of, yeah, you set out a price there for sure, I saw it, yeah. Did you talk to legal?
No, so legal inquiries is likely to not comment, because it's a specific situation. So I can reach out to town council, which would be very much worthwhile if we end up getting a more reasonable price for the truck. If they're gonna tell us to put it out to bid, and somehow we end up with $800, that, you know, sending the question to legal is just an added expense that we're not gonna recoup. So my guess is, in the end, he's gonna tell us to do something along Miles' idea.
Just putting it out for bid?
I think so, I don't, I don't think there's, you know, to be compliant with the authority to sell it in the warrant article. I think you're gonna have to.
What happens with what we already know, like, it's already happened, and he's already given a deposit?
So we can refund the deposit if he doesn't get it, or wants to withdraw his bid.
Okay, okay.
And he may drop his bid.
Yeah.
So you have a choice. Unfortunate incident.
Yeah, it is.
Okay, so.
I mean, you see how bids work.
I know, that's why we went off and wanted to go off on, yeah.
So like, what if we had wanted to trade this truck?
And $1,000?
No, no, but.
But the legality of that.
You can't do it, you need to have the dealer bid on it, like.
That's a really good point, it sort of implies to my mind that you don't trade it in, because you are essentially selling it to the dealer.
Right.
That's a really good point.
We've never traded anything in our thing, have we?
They were gonna give us $1,000 for that truck.
I know, but I don't think history says we've never traded anything, yeah.
I don't think we have, but it has been an ongoing conversation, it's something that could have happened at any one of a number of times. You know, like the Volvo, you know, they thought about trading that in for, or the Skid steer for a newer model, it's something that comes up in conversation. So while the language was written to make best use of the opportunity to sell a piece of equipment, it's not working out that that's gonna bear us the best fruit, it seems.
There's a specified in the truck in that article.
Any surplus vehicles or equipment, I don't think you're gonna get around it.
And you can't put, have a value of it having, it has to be by a certain, it has to have at least a certain amount?
Oh, sure we can.
Sure you can, I don't think there's anything that says you can't put a minimum bid.
Yeah.
Must be a minimum bid or more?
I think you can absolutely, there's nothing that someone can't do that. It's just the highest bidder.
Yeah, we don't accept any bids either.
Right, if you, if you, they're all low, and you don't feel as though any of them meet the mark, you cannot accept any of them.
Okay, so can we make the minimum bid, the price that we have?
You could, it's still an unfortunate situation with the buyer.
With the gentleman and whoever it was.
Right, and someone comes in at 22.
And a dollar, you know.
22.5, 22.5, 501, or 510.
Yeah, so it doesn't negate that, it was.
But at least if we can get what, closer to the value of the piece that we have versus, you know, selling it for $5,000.
We thought we were doing the right thing, you know.
Right.
Doesn't need to go on the paper?
No.
Okay.
Just on our webpage, or whatever?
It has to be duly public, but there are no laws about how you put something out to bid, you know, it would certainly.
Then how were we able to take them to the surplus auction before?
What do you mean, how, well, because an auction is a bidding process.
But it's not what we get, right?
No.
They get a percentage of it, right?
But you're still putting it out to bid, you're still, it's still a bidding process, I mean, it's kind of on consignment, so to speak, but it's still a bidding process.
Cause we just decided not to go that road either, because you don't tend to get too much when you go into the, the auto auction, so. Okay, so it's your pleasure.
So I move that we put truck number one out to bid with a minimum bid of 22,500, and bids are due.
And how long do we have to keep it open for? Is there a minimum?
You know, I really don't, I'll check with legal inquiries, but I really don't think that there are any rules, as long as you're making a public announcement and posting it in all of your regular ways about, I don't think, you wanna be, give some people reasonable time to respond, but I don't think you have to, there are not minimum timeframes.
Have you talked to the gentleman who's giving this deposit?
Oh, he is aware that it could be refused.
Okay, but he knows that we have to put it out to bid?
I haven't talked to him today.
Oh, okay, okay.
He's away on vacation, but he said he was available by phone, we didn't wanna bother him until I knew what was going on.
Okay.
So we just have to make sure that we have the availability of returning his deposit, if it's not the.
We can absolutely do that. And if you could send him, I'll get you the bid document when it's ready, and you can send it to him, so he knows he has it, and he can respond that way, yeah.
So I think we want bids by noon on Friday, do you think that's?
It could be as late as 1:00 on Monday, because to my, my suggestion would be that you open them Monday night.
Next Monday's meeting.
Yes, not at 6:30 or 7:00, because you have swearing in an officer and then ever source, but you can pick, you know, 8:00 or 7:30 or something.
Okay.
Alright, so.
So.
1:00 on Monday?
1:00 on Monday.
1:00 on Monday, okay.
29.
Alright, any other bad news?
I don't bring bad news, so that is my motion.
Oh, we have voted on it, keep me in the loop, yeah, bye. Okay, so I'll second the motion, any further discussion? None, all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion passes. Thank you for keeping me on.
Sure.
Okay.
So we need to put it on the website.
Oh, yes.
That we're gonna post road construction signs this week for Sligo, so we can start, so at least get the public aware, and let them know that pavings could be within, he's saying two to three weeks.
So they're gonna do Sligo first?
No.
Oh.
They wanna, they'll probably do Heritage.
Okay.
But in the meantime, he's gonna be digging up Sligo.
You are, yeah, yeah, okay.
We'll start doing some ditch work.
You need to get a flagger for that, or you'd be able to.
It's not a busy road. We waved all the way, they normally would have had $5,000 in there for flagging.
Okay.
When we did which run and Heritage last year, Bob says, we get certified to flag, so we'll be on the site anyway, see what's going on, same time, so we'll take care of flagging, so eliminated $10,000 out of the project, so.
Great.
Flag poles are just like those mine over there, that's in town, okay.
Yeah, I wanna know, do you wanna repair these flag poles, or do we?
So the board had asked to see if you could do anything with them, are they repairable, or do you?
Yeah, I think they're actually just pieces of pipe, just put together, we can bring them, take them down, we'll make them so they can be taken down to fix and paint, you know, we can have Mike weld up something, and we can fix them, and I don't think it's gonna be automatic, I can look into what the price of pipe costs, it shouldn't be too big a deal. But I believe, you know, either, we gotta straighten them out, or take them, or take them out, because, you know, it looks like crap. We're gonna move them back away from the power lines a little bit, till we don't have flags tangled in the wires. But we can, you know, make them brackets and embed them in cement or whatever. They do have a name on them that were donated by somebody, so. At least we gotta fix them up, keep them functional.
Does anyone fly a flag there?
It hasn't been, because the poles have been broke for so long, I mean, it's, it is the town's park, so whether we should be flying flags or not, I don't, you know, it's a choice you have to make, we pick some to fly flags, or we just don't, you know, take them down and there is a plaque on the ground, in the cement, on a cement, on a rock, then there's two flag poles, and assuming they'd like to have flags flying on them, if they don't either. So.
Who, like, who goes and raises and lowers the flags, and is this?
Police chief manages the one out here, the fire department manages their own, and.
Their own. I'm just curious if, cause we don't wanna leave them flying all the time, because someone's gonna take them, or I'm just putting it out there.
Would then we just take that on?
We can probably get a flag to install that, but I mean, somebody to keep an eye on it would be.
We maintain, you maintain that, right?
We maintain the flag, the part.
The part, yeah.
Why don't we, why don't we see what the cost is to repair, and then go from there? I don't wanna put something else on someone's plate that's already full, you know.
Okay, so we're gonna not do it yet, we're just gonna see how much it costs, and then you get back to us, and we'll think about.
Yeah, we can have a check, you know, we can check it, obviously what it would cost to fix them, and I don't think it would be a big deal, but, you know, again, it's been about a while, so.
Right.
Okay.
The truck will hold off another week, I'll get ahold of him, the signs have been ordered for the, I ordered five signs, uh we don't need a fee of what we're under, under two hundred dollars, so.
This is the dog.
Dog's waste, yep. What else? I get nothing else, I guess, right now, I don't know. We haven't talked about the driveway conflict situation till we know what's going on with that, right?
I think we oughta wait until we hear back from Lee Lynn queries about drive my call. Yeah.
Anything?
Nope.
So we, let you know, we we just repaired two uh storm drains right out here on the other side of the building that collapsed and went down on corner of front and south, we'll be paving them in tomorrow, but we got to buy a couple things, but it was under about two hundred dollars, we just gave it that stuff.
Great.
Alright.
Thank you, George.
Thank you, George.
Hey, administration, fire department salaries.
By all means, if you wanna discuss it, you're welcome to discuss it, you have been holding out until you determined police salaries with Mike, but that's up to you if you have a.
You wanna just wait until that comes along?
Yeah.
Okay, we're gonna defer it until next week. Okay, CIP committee?
That's a placeholder, we're waiting for the budget committee to meet and delegate one of theirs and planning board.
Budget.
And then we'll bring that information back here and and I'm not sure it needs to be on the agenda anymore, but.
Yeah.
Okay.
We'll work to set up a meeting after that.
Space needs committee draft charge.
So you all received a draft of the space needs. I I would suggest that you, I I don't think that there's it's a discussion item at this point, but that's up to you all.
I haven't had a chance to thoroughly review it.
Yeah, I need to digest it a little bit as well, okay, let's leave it on there and we can bring it back up. Eversource, April twenty-ninth?
Yes, they're coming in next week to talk about what the ROI is to switch over all the town buildings over to LEDs, it would keep the energy consumption cost level for three years, after which the project would be paid for and consumption cost would go down considerably. So they have fire department information now, so that will be included in the proposal. There was a question as to whether or not they use enough electricity to warrant including them, so he'll speak to that next week.
Okay, so it's town hall, it's highway and.
The highway and the fire.
Fire, so this is, the school's not, uh do they have LED now?
Um they have a lot of LEDs, I don't know if they're completely LEDs.
They were not part of the proposal.
They're not part of this proposal, no.
Okay. Any other questions?
No.
Okay.
This, so so this is a um a request by the school, it's an idea. I I talked to George about it, so.
For the record, I'm just gonna say what it is, painting fish by ca- catch basin.
Yes, so you've you've all seen this, no doubt, at some point, you know, you've seen on the pavement a picture of a fish near a catch basin. And the point of that is to give messages to people that what you put down storm drains ends up in the river and you should take care with that. So the school reached out because they were looking for projects for um a group of boys between grades two and six, that spans all those age groups, some kind of activity that they could all do together. They were looking for input, and by the way, that's an ongoing request in case any of you has any ideas about that, but um it was an idea I had that they like, that they could create templates and paint fish by the storm drains and that would help with our MS four permit.
Okay.
But it would also be useful to the fire depart, to the highway department, because when they plow, they cover storm drains, but they need to keep them clear for drainage, so if they're installed in the pavement, like not in the middle of the street, but pointing to the catch basin from further out, then it would help them see them in the winter and make sure they can keep them clear. So the roads are your domain, so how do you all feel about allowing the children to paint fish by the catch basins?
So it's just gonna be like a black fish or?
I would hope that it would be yellow or or some other standout, consistent standout color.
Blue or.
Blue maybe, but yeah, something visible that's not black, but is consistent.
Yeah.
Yeah, I don't, I don't think I have a problem with that.
So it it would only be in the downtown area, in the storm drain area and not on the state roads. So it's on our local roads.
So like a a template that they're gonna spray paint, is that gonna hold up or if it does, it does, it doesn't, it doesn't?
Yes. Well, there's that about it, it's another project for a couple of years down the road for another set of kids, unless we wanna keep it up. But yes, I wouldn't expect that it would last more than a couple of years.
How are they going to manage like kids on the road?
Well, there's gonna be adults in that.
There will be adults there, adults with them, yes.
They'll probably have several adults and they can do different locations at the same time, probably, to limit everyone right there on the road.
Yeah.
I would leave that to them too, and I can offer that caution, please, but.
Okay, yeah, I think it's fine.
Okay, we have to go down then?
I think our consensus is fine, you seem to have a consensus about it.
Consensus, and you're okay? Okay, sounds good. Alright. Okay, appointments, tree warden fence viewer and parks from rec.
So we have no applicants for this, in fairness, Celia had requested that I put out more information about um their duties and such and I have not had a chance to do that, so um I can follow up with that, but at this point, the deadline's passed, you can extend the deadline.
Okay.
It's up to you, you wanna handle that.
Is there actual list of the duties of this job?
Well, so there are um some RSAs that point to things that, you know.
Because wouldn't the parks and recs actually be responsible for the flag poles? Cause that's a part, that's a park?
Probably, you know.
Yeah, there would be a a people to go to when you have questions about it, cause it's the one across from the fire station and then it's the one down here, right?
Yes.
Yeah.
Yes, but further, the parks and rec is really interesting and and a little bit troubling in that it's not very well defined, but it's you know, it seems to me that it would be the group that would decide, you know, to paint the gazebo at the park or to, you know, add a bench at the park.
Yeah, yeah.
Potentially delegate more town lands to make a park or install a playground or, you know, something like that, it could have, you know, but it doesn't, it's not really clear. It would take some research to determine what is its official name and and was it given an original charge and when and what is the original charge, so.
So.
It it, you know, that's why, you know, it it's, it didn't go out with a whole lot of information because there is not a whole lot of information easily at hand. Of course, there's research to do, but it's not as though those positions have been very active.
Yeah.
Of late, so. Which doesn't mean that that can't change.
No, yeah.
Someone, Mary, add something to this about parks and rec, I just happen to know, I was reading a deed for Sandy Banks and it said it was donated on condition that the parks and rec committees would be managing it. And I suspect, and I think I was reading after that that we formed one, so it's like in the thirties, I think.
Is that the place on Locust Street?
In Shandry, yes, that is for recreational use only.
Yeah.
So I just wanted to.
And it is in their hands, yes.
I would really have to see that be used.
But I just wanted to say that I remember seeing that when I looked at the deed.
Okay, thank you. Um, cause I think that would be a great asset for the park, the ride department.
If people are interested in doing something with it, yes.
Yep, exactly.
So I had um forgotten, um cause it was March nineteenth, that John Hensman had reached out to me and asked um to be appointed tree warden. I don't know if we wanna take that under consideration tonight or, I don't know why he didn't reach out again, maybe he didn't see the call.
Would you like me to follow up with him?
Um sure.
Okay. Can I put a talk to the rec department to see if any of them are interested in being on here with that potential of having?
Yes, but I think we still need to go back to the nineteen thirties or whatever it was that it was created to see what's its charge.
Mm-hmm, yep, yep.
And what's its authority?
Well, I think one of them was already on it, it was on it last year, Kelly. She was in that position.
Yes.
At town leader.
It would be really nice, though, if people were more aware of Sandy Banks and that's.
How did you even get there, I mean.
Well, it's a lot.
There there are paths off of Stevens Court, which is off of um Locust Street, there's a path off there, there's a path, there's another path off of
Right next to.
Like Willie Street Extension. I think there's another one off of.
Well, it's right next to um Kelly Haines's house.
Okay.
Yeah, there are a couple little footpaths.
Your brothers could tell you, kids used to play there all the time at the, whenever you know, yeah.
I just remember there being fights there.
Well, probably, maybe that was your brother.
Yeah, more likely.
But they used to use it all the time when Harry was growing up. Alright, well, let's um let's put it out for next week, okay? Alright, employee recognition, dinner, new gym space, school.
So um I was asked to reach out to the school, I have done so and they do find that that would be an appropriate use and that that date is free and the gym is not yet going to be under construction, that won't happen until after July first. So it seems workable, um we need to fill out facilities, I I need to fill out a facilities form. We need to talk about setup and tables and chairs and in a firmer plan, but um it's hypothetically workable.
Okay.
Are we thinking this is gonna be a potluck or?
Well, that's what I mean, there's still a lot of details to work out about how this is gonna work.
I mean, there's a kitchen there, but.
I'm not sure we would have access to the kitchen unless we have, uh like the Danny Mulligan who runs the kitchen would have to be there, I think.
And and um he did mention, I only just heard back from him today, he did say something about having custodial staff there or somebody to delegate with, you know, a key, so I don't know if they're gonna, how they're gonna work out a custodial fee or if that's applicable, um I didn't get the sense of that from him, but he, since he mentioned that, um I need to follow up with him and.
Well, you have to quite fill out that form.
Oh, I know about the form, yes.
So if you fill out the form, then it's gonna say what the fees are on that form, if there's any, I believe.
So I'll still work that out with him, but.
Yeah, you guys have the principal, right?
Yes, but it sounds workable, we still need to, as you say, discuss logistics.
Great.
Um so that's um June twenty-ninth, just to confirm, that was the date, that's a Saturday night that you all discussed.
Okay.
So I think that's pretty flexible, just not after July one, because after July one, the gym might be.
It could go up a week earlier than a week later.
Potentially, right.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, Mike, I can't do the twenty-second, Mike can't do the twenty-second.
Oh, okay, so that's why we went to the twenty-ninth, okay.
Yeah, I I mean, we could go a week, but I think school still might be in session, I I don't know.
But it's a Saturday night, so it might not matter?
So, yeah.
But I think there is flexibility there, the the biggest thing was, is it an appropriate use and, yeah, are they okay with the idea, they seem to be, so.
Okay, good.
I'll follow up with them.
Alright, great, thank you. Okay, gas expansion in Rollinsford.
Yes, so. There was an email.
I was totally confused where they were.
So it comes through Dover, up Portland Ave, I'm not sure where it ends, but it doesn't branch off of that.
Do you have that even?
Yeah.
The map that they had was not clear at all.
Okay.
It was.
I didn't look at the map.
Yeah, I didn't look at a map either. Is it this? I don't know, this isn't my head. So they were, so it says town of Kingston, natural gas, huh?
Is that Rollins Road?
Yep.
Maybe that's where.
Okay, so they're saying here, what's that?
Um I think that's Rollins Road.
No, cause if you go this way, a little bit, what, where's Fresh Creek?
That's next to Citizens Bank, it's a class six road that.
See, to me, I thought that was Route four and then.
It runs, you're not allowed to Route four, Fresh Creek runs parallel to Route four.
So here's the Dover line, I think, nope.
I know, is it confusing or what? I couldn't figure out where it was going.
Here's, here's Portland Ave, so this is Oak, no.
That's Rollins Road, they're saying, right, what's that?
This is Portland Ave.
Right.
This must be Oak Street and then Rollins?
But this is the country club, so maybe. Do you think that's Oak Street?
Yeah, I do, it doesn't make sense that there's no connection to any other road, but.
It might be just their lines, where their lines are and it doesn't include other roads, perhaps.
Yeah.
So what purpose would it serve to do this?
So it's a service to potential customers, really, they want, they wanna increase their customer base. So that means they're gonna want to dig up roads to install infrastructure, residents might appreciate that, they might want the option. I would want input from Tom Clark about code and police and fire about.
But also, I mean, will they put the roads back to what it, what it was or better?
Well. In theory, yes, they would need a dig permit, they're also gonna have to go through the state and get dig permits through the state for the state roads.
Okay.
Yes, you have to fill out a form, leave a deposit and it's refundable after a year if the roads are, you know. But but they're still cutting up your roads, which is not to say that you don't do it if it's something that the residents care about, but is it something? I would also wanna like talk to the planning board about it, is it something that really matters to residents because it's a lot of.
Having natural gas is a huge.
Savings, right?
Yeah.
Yes, yeah.
So this says the entire town.
So really, like what, so I would wanna know more from them about what is their timeframe about that and are they looking for any kind of investment from the town? Or they just want permission to, over a period of three years, dig up every road or what is the plan?
Oh, okay, I'm sorry, I honed in on that, but it's expand our current natural gas franchise rights to serve the entire town. Not that they're going to do this all at once, but they want the right to and I don't know.
Well, so, so that to my mind is a franchise agreement similar to Comcast where the infrastructure exists and somebody has the right to use it and others don't, for a fee, for a fee to the town. But to my mind, that would also sort of imply an expansion of infrastructure because I'm not sure what the point is with, I mean, I could be wrong, but right now it's available to so few residents.
Are they planning to come in and talk to us?
They are reaching out to, and I think they would really.
Because I certainly would be nowhere prepared to give them an answer tonight or whatever.
Not at all, not at all, I think this is the very beginning of a process where we could, should consult um Tom Clark and fire and police and planning.
Absolutely, absolutely, yeah.
So they're looking for, uh so I am reaching out to understand what the proper protocol would be for requesting a letter of support from the Rollinsford Select Board for Unitil's petition to the New Hampshire Public Utilities Commission to expand our natural gas franchise. And he included two other letters to Kingston and Atkinson.
So you can read those letters and see if, in essence, you support what they're trying to say.
Well, I saw their letter, it was something pretty basic. It's like, yeah, we're okay with it, go for it, you know.
Well, but I, um.
But they may already have it in their town, too.
Well, right, what does it mean to say that? Well, right, what does it mean to say that, what, what are you signing off on, what, you know, what are you okay with?
Right. Yeah.
What are the implications of consent, I guess?
Yeah, cause I know nothing about that, I know that it's underground and it's.
Right.
And Dover has it, I know they have it from Oak down Route four, because they lived down in there, he had it, but. That's all, I don't know.
Not to say that we don't want it, I just, I would.
I think we need to reach out to, know that, I would know more about this.
I would just like to low, know a little bit more about what they're hoping for.
If they, if they call, we'd be glad to hear that, I would say, but we also need to make sure that everyone else is either part of it, or, um, you know.
Do you want me to follow up with them, or do you want me to leave it?
Let's leave it for now, and I, can you just talk to Tom about it first?
Absolutely.
And then who on the planning board should?
John Prebs is the only one I think who would have some real knowledge about whether or not.
I would just reach out to him, and maybe tell him we are nowhere near making a decision, but need to send it to him, how he feels about it, and, and Tom. Are you okay with that?
Yeah, yeah.
Okay, okay. Alright.
Kingston strongly supports the plan. And Atkinson. Discuss the proposal. I'm sure it's about, it's, it's to the overall project will be met with great enthusiasm, so maybe we even, I, I don't know, I think it's.
Uh, that is, that is intu-, like, you know, if I could go where I think you've stopped, um, we could reach out to them and find out why they're enthusiastic, or whether or not they had any concerns about it.
Yeah.
I'm more interested in who said no and why they said no, too, though, and that you don't get to know.
Yeah. Yeah. I would first talk to these two people.
Yes.
How are two people, and then, like, once we hear their opinion, then we can reach out to those, those two, um, groups.
Do that.
Yeah. Yep.
Okay. Alright, um, policy review. Is this saying that these are the first three that we need to tackle?
So, no, it's not, and I heard you that I, I need to do that, um, no, it's not. Um, I'm gonna suggest that we start with personnel, but that there are subtopics of personnel. And I have a call into, um, an attorney associated with Primex, we're playing phone tag, but he will share with me a host of template policies that we can review and adopt, I think, in pretty short orders, that, that I think would be an improvement over what we have. So, I'd like to suggest we start with that, because I think it's, you know, well, I wouldn't wanna adopt a whole employee handbook, um, right now. I think there are pieces and parts that we can implement to supersede what we have in place and work in that direction. But there are a multitude of things under that. Second to that, um, perhaps the board policy, the select board policy. I had shared that with you.
Shared it with me?
All of you.
All of them?
Yes, so I'm gonna send that, I'm gonna send that one again.
When did you send that?
It was a couple months ago now.
Yeah, please share it.
Yes, so that would be my recommendation, is the aspects, you know, the, the separate parts of, um, appropriate, the, the employee handbook is what I'd like to call it, rather than a personnel policy, break it down into components, and then, um, we'll get a good start on that.
Yeah, I think the handbook is a great way to have, and then have them sign it, saying they received it, and, you know, and I will, I, I will bring mine in to show.
Oh, alright, and then, um, the board policy, I have a good template, and you can start reviewing that, and see if you think of that. I, I'm hoping and thinking that those will be pretty, um, will require review, but shouldn't need quite as extensive revision as some other things. Not quite as, um, energy intense.
Yep, okay, so.
So I'll forward, I will send things along to you, um, the attorney as soon as I have them, but I can send, I'll send the board policy over tomorrow, so you can.
I start looking at that. Are we gonna talk about the elements and the credit card elements, or is that?
We certainly can, if you want to, because aside from the purchasing policy as a whole, whether or not you really want to revise the purchasing policy, that, I think, would be a good idea, and it would be, it will rise to the top of the list, once we have a bookkeeper in place that will enable better functionality. But I, I wouldn't suggest changing policy before we can really implement it well. Um, but in the meantime, you absolutely can address, to some extent, you can, you can address the purchasing limit and the credit card limit outside of the policy, because that's pretty.
Well, I know that that was one of the things that some department heads want, but my biggest concern is, um, cash flow, um, sometimes in a year, and, and so, I, I don't know how much I wanna up it.
Yeah, I, I think we need to be cautious, I mean, I think it's, definitely has room to move up, but, but yeah, uh, you know, all of a sudden we'd be hit with, with five thousand dollars in unexpected spending.
Yeah, cause it could be, it could be multiple POs, not just one PO, you know, either that or have, well, I don't even know if you could add a total to it, but.
The other thing you can do is change purchasing limits for, um, specific positions, or a specific type of positions, or for specific types of purchases, which can add flexibility. It doesn't have to be an across-the-board.
Yeah.
Right.
Limit.
I just think we still are, we still have some that spend in Camden with a PO, and that concerns me, that if we gave them higher limits, that that would, you know.
So I think there are other ways to address that, because there are a couple of, I was thinking about that, um, there are a couple of reasons, common reasons why that happens. And one is because outside agencies just send an annual invoice. And they know to expect it, but they weren't necessarily thinking it was this month, so that's typically a purchase order after the fact.
Emergencies is another one.
And then emergencies.
However, I think if they have an emergency, they can immediately, or next business day notify you at least, that they have an emergency.
Well, right.
Someone needs to know about it, other than the people that are doing it, you know.
So that's, that's a deeper policy language thing, you know?
It's a policy, yeah.
Yes.
Okay, I just think sometimes we just, just do it, just to make it easy, I don't know. I just, I just need, I mean, that's why I'm kinda reluctant to make it more, because then it's that much more that we have to worry about.
Well, yeah, it puts us in a position, so, so you gotta not approve of an emergency repair, like, we, we don't have a choice at that point.
Right, right. Right.
So, yeah.
The other thing you can do, which might seem a little counterintuitive, is fill in other financial policies first, and kind of work your way backwards to the purchasing policy, having a fund balance policy, having, you know, other
Yep.
things in place, and, and sort of put your head in, in that, and, and look at the sort of, the practical aspect worked out, and, and it can help inform this conversation, I think.
Yeah, because I think that, that sometimes they're thinking, well, it's, I have my budget, my budget has gotten approved, so it's my money to spend. But if you all did it at the same time, then we're in trouble, because, you know, it, it could hurt us in, you know, like, say, May and June is a, is a tough couple of months, and October and November, December, you know, until, cause of your taxes coming in and stuff. So I just wanna make sure that we don't give them too much.
Well, so.
Pretty rain.
Right, and, and it could also, um, maybe there's a way in, in the language, again, in the finer point of the policy, to speak to things that are budgeted in certain categories of anticipated expenses, are either not a purchase order category, and are just, you know, approved through other miscellaneous bills through the board as they are now, or through me, or are just exempt from a certain part of the process. You know, there, there are different categories of expenses, and, and I think you can treat them, some of them differently, with care.
Yeah, I think once we get you your, your help, it'll take some of that off of you, then, then we can probably work some kind of a process that it, you know, that can be higher.
That can allow for better reporting, which can alleviate some.
Well, you could give a, you know, an approval based on what we say, you can do this up to, you know, and they don't have to wait for our meeting or something like that, you know, give you more flexibility to take care of it immediately, versus waiting for us to have another meeting. If we give her, you know, an, an amount that she has the authorization to do, you know, and knowing what kind of year it is and stuff, then, you know,
Yep.
I think I have to wait for the board, because right now we're in a cash flow problem, then they're aware of it without just, you know, going forward with it.
Yes, yes.
That's where.
I like that idea, that it sort of flows to a central person, and you, then you have a much broader view of everything that's going on, and develop reporting that can be given to the board, that shows here, you know, ten things that got bought this week.
But she's gotta get, she's gotta get her help first, you know, so, I mean, we're not saying that we won't do something to help us, but
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
we just need to get resources in-house first, and then work out something.
I agree, and I think it's gonna be something that's probably, um, some adjustments, and see how it goes, evaluation, and see, you know,
Yeah, yes.
I, I would like to think that these things, even once approved, will be consistently evaluated, so that we can see how well
Absolutely.
they're working and.
Absolutely.
Adjust accordingly.
Okay, so let's just, we'll do it on one.
Okay.
Keep it on another. Um, okay, so, I guess we're at Town Administration standing on its board members' activities and updates.
Um, this Wednesday, I have a Stormwater, um, meeting at seven, here.
Is that at seven, I thought it was at six thirty.
Oh, maybe it is six thirty.
Is Wednesday, that we have a budget meeting?
Yes, yeah, Stormwater, I'll be in the other room.
Oh, okay.
Um, I guess I don't know the time.
We'll confirm time.
But that's it.
I have a budget committee meeting on Wednesday at six thirty, and I have a ref meeting on Thursday at six. I mean, that's it, that's enough this week. So, that's all I have. Town Administrator update?
So, um, you may know that the ZBA, I just wanna give you a broad overview of the week at a glance. Last week, the ZBA heard a hearing for proposed use on Oak Street on two non-conforming lots to be merged with a duplex put on. Miles, I think you were on the planning board, and that was heard for the conditional use permit. There was a lot of, um, confusion on the board, they're doing a really good job, new members, being very thoughtful. But it is very confusing, the difference between a special exception and a variance, and, and the different processes, and they're working it out. So they've stayed the hearing for, um, a few weeks, and they will, you know, they'll continue it and finish it up when the property owners can attend in a few weeks. But it, it brings about, um, need for potentially, or discussing the potential of changing the, the planning regulations, because the planning board heard the same project for a conditional, not a conditional use permit, but to, to vote to decide that it was an inappropriate use for those properties. And, and the planning board, um, I think, had a different view of that process, or, or is weighting their, um, participation in the process differently than the ZBA is, and what I mean by that is that the applicant is weighing the planning board's vote in that regard very heavily, which was not really the planning board's intention. And so, um, it, it brings to mind, um, whether or not it's worthwhile to maybe meet with the zoning board, the planning board and the zoning board together to decide, how, outside of hearing a case, when there's nothing on the docket, how's the zoning ordinance working, and, and maybe work together to suggest some revisions to make it a little bit more practical? So, um, it was really interesting to see that play out like that. But they're doing a really good job for a completely new slate of residents. It's really, it's really good, they're being very thoughtful. This week, I will be with Miles in Stormwater, and I will attend ref, if you would like me to, I, I, they're probably starting hiring, I don't know how you feel about that, and if you.
Well, if you have to be there.
Ref is Thursday.
Oh, Thursday, that's right.
Stormwater is Wednesday with budget, and by the way, you'll have your new budget secretary starting on Wednesday. So I will be here, um, a few minutes early to shove the camera in.
Okay.
Get her acclimated.
What else is on the agenda for ref, I haven't done for, for the night?
There may be updates on grants or activities to do with kids, um.
Um, have you told them about what the plan is on credit card?
No, because they haven't met yet.
Okay, so, um, if you wanna come.
I'll come.
For a little bit, I mean, I'm just saying.
I'll come, it's fine.
Yeah, very nice, bye. Just to get that cleared up and what that was about, okay?
Yes.
Alright, um, review of correspondence. July, is it this? I don't think there's anything like this, right?
It's just a purchase order, it's no.
So we have a purchase order for Labelled Computer Services, computer, computer technical support for ten hours for seven hundred and sixty dollars. This is who bought, this is the allotment that you buy.
It's ten hours at a discounted rate, that we buy at a habit time, so he's out of hours now.
Okay, so, um, PO number is one six two zero? I wanna make, go ahead, you make a motion, I'll decide.
Okay, I'll, I'll move, purchase order one six two zero, to Labelled Computer Services for seven hundred and sixty dollars, for ten hours of support.
Oh, second. Okay, any discussion?
Yep.
Um, do you, have they come up with a plan on, um, putting rotor up in the ceiling yet, or is it that to go away?
Someone was supposed to do that, and, and that hasn't happened, so I will follow up on that.
Okay, alright, thank you, um, all those who can say aye?
Aye.
All those opposed? Alright. Oh, and that's coming up, out of IT hardware and software services.
I can print that.
You don't. Alright, um, thanks.
Alright, I'll move, purchase order one six seven eight, to B and B Offset, for twenty six hundred fifty-three dollars and twenty cents, for two hundred and fifty town reports.
Okay, I'll second it, any discussion?
We need two hundred and fifty town reports.
Every year she prints fewer of them, and so we need some printed, but, um, it's always a question whether or not, you know, how many do we need? It was the first year of SB two, so it'll be, you know, we still have a number of them out there, I'll talk to Kate about how we're doing with numbers. They're not available for the deliberative session, the, the deadline is after the deliberative session, so you're missing your in-person foot traffic until town meeting and voting, and so, um, she did bring several boxes down there, and, and they left on voting day, but I don't know if it was different, I think, you know, so, so two fifty, I think, was just a shot in the dark for first year of SB two.
So we already printed these?
Yes.
Okay, I'm sorry, I thought this was an additional six.
This is not an additional order, this is the only order, I do not believe there's an intention for every order.
Okay.
This one.
Um, sorry, twenty-six fifty-three twenty?
Okay.
Okay.
Alright, so, a motion to accept? Did you already do it?
Yep.
Okay, and I second it, okay, alright, all those who pay first, say aye?
Yep. Aye.
All those opposed? Motion passed. Okay, so that's on, it's in there, didn't have anything in that folder right now. And there's this that I had to approve, so that's it.
Yep.
So, community input now, or, that's it, alright. Community input, yes, Nancy?
Um, you were talking about the, um, gas lines. And I texted Jody, and, uh, there are a couple houses on Highland Ave that have, that the gas line has come up, Highland Ave, for a couple of the houses, and she said there was also houses on Route four that have.
In Rollinsford?
Yes, it's on that.
Cause it, they must have gone beyond the Dover line to go.
It is, it's in Rollinsford, it's just barely in Rollinsford.
Okay, okay. Barely in Rollins, and they must have come off of, uh, Oak, yeah. Barely in Rollins, and they must have come off of uh Oak, yeah, okay.
Oak.
Alrighty, thank you. Any other comments?
On the gas line, I would just, Lorraine Hanson, Watson Lane, I would just like to mention, if we're looking at, I think the idea of finding out what community said no is important. I think of the Miramac Valley in Massachusetts. I wanna know, it's a really good company.
Mm-hmm.
Yep.
Anybody else, Cian? Okay, um we have to go into non-public for personnel?
Yes.
Okay, um so, we will, the end of, there will be a German after that, so.
Um I move to go into non-public session for personnel issues.
I'll second it. Oh, roll call? Yes.
Uh, yes.
Okay, so we'll wait till the cameras get shaken out and, so you did get my email, right? Todd DeGrand?
Seven thirty eight.
Yes.
Okay.
I'm sorry, I've been out of town on vacation for the last five days.
Oh, that's good.
Just catching on. I've not been connected to technology, so.
Oh, that's lovely.
You must have been, you must have been in Vermont. Yes. So, I I'm gonna respond to it tonight and.
Well, you don't have to, as long as I know that you know that I got it and that we'll pay the bill direct.
Yeah.
Okay.
So, we'll go back at the meeting.
Yep, sounds good, thank you, alrighty, bye-bye.
Go all the way to country, Vermont.
Really out of the booty.
Yeah, we know. Missed the door.
Um. No.